He's a good guy.
Oh, yeah, he's very.
Thank you.
Thanks for filling him out.
Should you have started the meeting? Because I think you should. Then I'll.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no.
It'll make it.
This is. Because this is after.
What's that?
I mean, we're not starting. Yeah.
We will start our meeting with the Hamilton County Board of Finance. We're here to review the financial work of the Treasurer's Office for 2023. Is Byer here or representative from the Treasurer's Office?
See anybody?
It does not. Well, we will go ahead and go through the report that she has provided to us with the annual investment statement she is prepared. The good news is unlike the prior lean years, the county actually has done a nice return on the funds that have been held in our custody, both for our use and by the use of other taxing units within Hamilton County. And she's broken down by bank and type of investment, the various investments that have been made on behalf of the county. And total interest earned for 2023 is nineteen million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. And to put that in perspective, in 2017, the average interest rate was point two five percent. And in 2018, it went up to a whopping one point one two percent. And I don't have a percentage on these numbers. Oh, there we go. We went up in 2023 to three point nine five percent. So congratulations with her investment policies. We have her proposed investment policy in place. Is there a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will. Is there a motion to close the Board of Finance?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This time, I'll call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of Commissioners Altman, Dillinger, and Harebrant present. If you'd all please stand and comment. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Preside him up is the approval of Executive Session Memorandum from today. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of meeting minutes from January eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Plaid approval date Lucas. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have one plaid on the agenda. It is the replaid of Block Three in Stucky Farms. This is located out in the Washington Township, two oh six in Joliet Road. And right away was dedicated with the original plaid. So there's no new right of way with this, and we recommend Brooklyn.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For highway business today, the first thing we have on the agenda is acceptance of a bond. So we have a bond here, date of January twenty-second. For your approval, recommend acceptance of this.
No approval.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second thing we have on the agenda is permission to advertise. This is our Community Crossings awarded project from late last year. And we have to get this under contract. So we would like to open bids on February twenty-third. This is recommend your approval to allow us advertise for that project.
Need approval.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third thing I have for you down on the agenda is an acceptance letter for your approval. This is federally project that was the resurfacing of one forty-sixth Street from US thirty-one to Hazledale Road. This has now been completed and ready to go back to end on with our acceptance. Recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next that I have on the agenda for you is a financial commitment letter. This is for the new Community Crossings application that is now open and is due by the end of the month. This one, NDOT, has, I think, a one-time opportunity to increase the award by fifty percent to one point five million dollars. So we're trying to capture all that in the first round for two thousand twenty-four. So we'd recommend your acceptance of the financial commitment. This is for resurfacing the segment of one forty-sixth Street from Springwell Road to US thirty-one. And then we're also adding in a segment of Oleo Road from Geist Reservoir North to one twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
We have the matching funds in our budget.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last thing I have, I think, we have a Friday tentative, February second, which you can't make it, so you had asked to reschedule. We can try to reschedule for February ninth. Or I don't think we have a lot, but we could do it as a work session on the twelfth after a regular meeting.
Would you guys prefer a work session?
I'm. I'll be going all of February.
We already do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Say, I don't think we'll have a lot, but.
If there is something of real significance, I can zoom in if necessary.
What's the work session that we have scheduled?
Mental health and.
Two?
Spire and then the also update from Minewell and.
And that might take a while.
That might take a while.
Why don't you just?
Well, I can look, see if. Let me see what we actually might have.
Okay.
And then we can decide.
That'd be great.
Could possibly wait till the following meeting.
Okay.
No, I can do the ninth if we need.
I could do that night if we need to.
Okay. Let me.
Well, go ahead and schedule a tentative on the ninth and then cancel if it's not that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Works for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the two thousand twenty-four liability and casualty insurance renewal. Mr. Doug Walker.
We had an insurance committee meeting last week where Walker's presented our renewal. We had a long discussion about a lot of things in that meeting. Hi, Chris. And we got some very favorable outcomes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Chris. Kind of stole, stole part of my story.
I know.
I told you it was good news. I was gonna do the setup and the whole. But actually, the story about the insurance this year, we were worried as we were coming through the whole year in the insurance business is, you can well imagine right now, there's a lot of uncertainty with loss, losses continuing across the country. A lot of them are natural disasters and stuff. But at the same time, that requires money to pay for the claims and with a lot of the big lawsuits that have been granted across the country against public entities, fire departments, police departments, sheriff's departments, jails, and so on and so forth. So we were kind of prepared for a really tough renewal to come through. But I will have to say that the good news is, from a, from a rate standpoint, the insurance is pretty much flat from what it was last year. There is an increase that you'll see in the premium of about eight and a half percent because, you know, we have more property values that we are insuring. We have more payroll, we have more employees, so on and so forth. As the county grows, we're gonna see, you know, increases in that regard. But from a rate standpoint, we're flat. And I would like to compliment the Stephen Rushforth and Rebecca, what they're doing in their, in their department. I think Stephen, I was talking to Stephen before I came up here, and we both kind of did the same analysis. He's why I put this together. I go, yeah, I did mine too. His is a lot neater than mine. You know, this, our number of claims this year are at the lowest level in twelve years, the number of claims, as well as the cost of, the total cost of our claim. This is the lowest we've had in twenty years. Just kind of a little snippet of that. This year, we've had, excuse me, ninety-three claims. Back twenty years ago, we had a hundred and nine. And you can think about how much growth we've had in twenty years. I mean, that's quite a reduction in the number of claims. And twenty years ago, our average claim was around a little over six hundred thousand dollars for, for the claims year, excuse me, for the claims year. And this year, our claims were at about three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I believe it.
So. And these numbers obviously can kind of move around. Depends on which month of the year that you, that you ran your numbers. These claims numbers were run at the end of December. So that's really eleven, eleven months shot. But still, the numbers speak for themselves and what is being done. And the Safety Committee has been very involved. Stephen, they, they really do a good job doing that. And also, all the department heads do a great job in taking it seriously. And I think these numbers stand for themselves. But.
Great.
Any questions that you have?
No, thank you.
Do we make a motion? We approve the renewal?
Well, second that.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Good job by all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Kristen.
Stephen? This time, I'll allow Susan Byers, our Treasurer, to come up. I think she was given the wrong time to be here. So she wanted to be able to speak and give an update to on their efforts and the investments that they have on the finances.
And we did go through your report at least.
We did. We did go through it.
Very exciting year.
Yes.
Definitely did not want to miss out on talking to you guys about it. Sorry, I had a little timing confusion. It was not my intention to be late, so sorry. But yeah, nineteen million, six hundred ninety-one thousand and some change in interest income last year. So very excited and very happy with moving stuff around and making the banks be accountable and kind of building them up against each other. So, yeah, fourteen million increase from last year and the highest average interest rate in the last seven years. So really excited and hoping to continue. I think, you know, there's some chatter going on about the rates dropping a little this year. And so I'm trying to lock in a little bit in some, maybe some six-month CDs to try to hold on to that at least five to five and a half interest rate. But just wanted to share that.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
We'd be more exciting if it went into our budget.
Yeah. No.
But it was glad to supplement.
I think we all can say that we commend you for the job that you've done on this and this record year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job. Awesome. Mr. Mertens, ISS. Civic Engage Statement of Work.
Right on time. Look at that.
Look at that, yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
This, this Civic Engage Agreement is just a renewal for our primary website, public-facing website. Civic is the company that hosts that for us.
Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Richardson, Clerk of the Circuit Court, State Election Grant Agreement. Good afternoon.
Happy to be here. This grant, actually, from the Secretary of State, will reimburse us for the money we are spending for our rental on our equipment building. So it's taking us to this year. And assuming we're working on a future plan, then that would, obviously, we'd take that over. Also, it took care of two other things that we had requested for our office, and we were happy to receive it.
Good news. Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Kathy.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Kathy came to us earlier this month through the Personnel Committee. She was having some difficulty understandably getting poll workers and all the things that have to do with the election because we virtually pay them nothing, almost. So she gave us a description, and she has sent it up to Wagner Irwin for a review. They come back with very favorable things that other people are doing, right? And so didn't you get about everything that you was asking for as far as raises for these? So we have completely revamped the poll workers and her precinct workers. Is that correct?
Yes, it went before the Commission, or the Election Board Friday, and they approved it, and it goes to the Council on the seventh.
Okay, so it'll go to Council? You've got it scheduled?
With the favorable recommendation from the Insurance Committee and approval of the.
Election Board.
Election Board.
So what all are the rates now?
Well, okay. If, one thing we're gonna do, our absentee board will now be paid hourly instead of a hundred dollars a day. So that will be a nice, probably about forty dollars or so increase for them. We will be paying our inspectors or managers at the polling place, depending on what their location is, which is because of the number of hours they work, anywhere from two twenty-five to one seventy-five for the day. Our inspectors, if you have one precinct, it is three hundred. If you have two or three, it's three hundred. Four is four hundred, five and six hundred. Because if you have, we only actually have one right now that's gonna have the five, be the five hundred. But if you're over five hundred precincts, that's, if you are over five precincts, that's a lot of responsibility.
Right.
For one day. But I think it will help us. We also changed the way our judges and Republican, Democrat judges were paid. And so we're, we're hoping it will help.
Oh, it should, because it was a.
You did a good job going after that. That needed to be changed for a long time.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's hope it helps out.
Well, we got a favorable vote from the Personnel Committee, so that's.
Great.
A good start.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Next up on the agenda is Stephen Rushforth, Safety Risk Management with three items.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today here, the first item on the agenda, I'm really here to present for information of the Board. In two thousand twenty-two, the Board approved three different internal claim processes, which are really designed to address low-level damage that oftentimes the damage to repair exceeds the cost for us to establish a claim. When I initially brought this idea to the Board and in a conversation with Commissioner Altman, I was looking back at my notes, and I hoped to see a cost savings around eleven thousand dollars. That exceeded those expectations. And so with some very, very minor changes involving the Auditor's Office and Hamilton County Legal, the direct cost savings from those changes is thirty-three thousand, six hundred and five dollars. So I'm definitely, definitely worthwhile. And before jumping to my next item on the agenda, just piggybacking off of Doug, because I think two thousand twenty-three, from a safety and risk perspective, not sure we could have asked for much better. So prior to coming in today, I looked at how two thousand twenty-three went in comparison to the seven-year average, looking at two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-two. If I look at the number of claims, just purely frequency across all lines of coverage, there was a twenty-seven percent reduction, which that's down thirty-six claims. When I look at the average work comp cost per claim, there was a sixty percent reduction, an average per claim savings of fifty-one hundred dollars. And then if you look at the seven-year average total spend, and the numbers Doug brought in were mid-December. The numbers I'm bringing in is through one, five, twenty-four, so it's a total year. It's a fifty-seven percent reduction, and that's an average annual savings, or that's a saving in comparison to our seven-year average of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And one thing that I think, obviously, the Board's aware of, but those here today, is when it comes to the numbers I'm speaking of, is because of the structure of our insurance and our liability insurance, it truly is, you're looking at total number spent. So in our world, it truly is a dollar that we don't spend is a dollar that Hamilton County's saving. So I think this is significant, and I would challenge really anyone to find another public entity that has remained flat with all the different exposures, especially the growth that Hamilton County's experienced right now. So I just wanted to share that for the Board's knowledge there. Any questions?
Great job and great.
Terrific job.
Job to your team.
Thank you. The second item on today's agenda is gonna be the annual OSHA three hundred A log. This is the log that we're required to bring each year. It's to be signed by this year's president. It shows all of the most severe injuries for the year that result in an OSHA reportable. For the year, we are up, we had twenty-six reportables. In two thousand twenty-two, we've had twenty-seven in two thousand twenty-three. Although it's a, the average employee difference, we were up eighteen employees in comparison to our annual average number of employees year over year. But we've had a reduction of eleven days lost and a reduction of two hundred and twenty-one days restricted. So although, essentially, to recap that, is although we've had a one more injury designated as reportable, they've been less, less severe than previous years, and we've seen reductions which ultimately would result in cost savings there. But welcome any questions or otherwise. This would just need to be signed by this year's president.
Any comments? Okay.
And the final, the final item that I'm bringing before the day, before the Board today is a program. So as the Board is aware, we're currently going through a transition of moving TPA firms that handle the claims administration for the county. Our new TPA offers several innovative programs. One of them is what's known as MedCor. I have experience with MedCor from a previous employer. It's very positive. But essentially, what it is, it is a triage line that is specific to injured employees, where injured employees using a telehealth solution can receive support one-four-seven. Essentially, the benefit is MedCor, forty-two percent of those, their calls result in self-treatment. So if you look at our work comp claims for the year, we've had fifty-one claims, forty-nine of those are med-only, two are indemny. So if you're using the numbers by MedCor, had this been instituted last year, we would hope to see about a twenty, about twenty claim reduction for the year. But my question for the Board is, would the Board support us moving forward with this solution? And if so, for those claims, because this is a free-claim solution, for those claims that ultimately result in a worker's comp claim where an employee needs additional treatment, the cost of that, it's eighty-five dollars per call could be billed to the claim file. The difference, though, is if the Board were allowed, and my request from the Board is, those claims, hopefully, we have a lot of them, that result in self-treatment and don't require any additional treatment resulting in a claim, we would receive a monthly invoice that either would be brought before the Commissioners by Safety Risk or with the Auditor's other liability items for those to be request payment out of the liability trust.
Any comments or questions?
Well, the discussion we had in depth in the Interests Committee when Steve wrote this up is, you know, it's, it's kind of a good, bad thing because some of these claims should be covered under our casualty workman's comp, not our medical coverage. Steve thinks that doing it this way overall will be a net savings, right?
Absolutely.
So I'm willing, he's researched a lot more than I have. I'm willing to take his recommendation.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks, Stephen.
Great job. Next up is Steve Wood, Buildings and Grounds, Bid Recommendations for Special Projects Bid, Number One and Number Two. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Bit packages came back where we thought they were gonna be at. Bit Package One, which is Community Correction Generator Replacement, eight hundred KW, Fredericks with Cummings Generator, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven one forty-five. On Bit Package Two, air handlers at the four-H, that's six units there. WMI got the labor. We are gonna do the same, we're doing the same procedures we're doing on all the other equipment. We're purchasing in-house through Skender. It's roughly a sixty thousand dollar savings doing that direction. That total price was four hundred fifty-four thousand, four thirty-two fifty-one. Just asking for your approval for move forward with this.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development Block Grant, Michelle. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have before you today the ratification of President Harebrant's signature for the Section one oh six Historic Review and Tribal Consult Letters that are required to go out as part of the environmental review. This is for acquisition for a hand project. The property in question is at, it's fifteen hundred Greenfield Avenue. And I would first like to thank. to thank everyone that did assist in getting the, getting the signatures. President Harebrand, I appreciate you being available for that, and Connor and Lee for orchestrating all of that for me. So I greatly appreciate that. If there are any questions about the project process?
Any comments, Connor, on any of this?
No, I think she, you know, hit the, all the points sufficiently for this.
They're required.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to ratify.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Committee Report, Steve, anything?
Well, I've kind of already reported on my reports. I, you know, I think, like I say, with our eight and a half percent increase on our medical, and they shopped it, by the way, too, because we checked to make sure of that, and having almost a negative claims ratio, but eight and a half percent with all the growth that we have. And I advise them, you know, with us looking at childcare center, Women's Center, and Safety Center, and all the centers we're looking for, I mean, that's going to escalate just because of the value of stuff escalating.
Yeah.
And then I think, as we talked about before, in our childcare center, the possibilities of maybe having a childcare professional meet. And by the way, when you go up to look that, you might want to pick Steve Wood with you.
Definitely, Steve.
Yeah.
We're going on a field trip, Steve.
Look at that smile. Look at that smile.
You like field trips, don't you, Steve?
I love it.
I thought you did.
I want to bring a lunch.
Well, we have some real exciting news potential with that childcare center thing, so.
And I'd point out, Steve was the locator of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we thought we missed out, but after talking to the owner and another provider, we haven't yet. We're working together. So thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Christine?
Just been primarily working on land acquisition, so I think we will be successful this week.
Great. Only other things I wanted to reiterate, I'm really proud of the team that we have here. Susan and the Treasurer's Department and what you were able to do this year to, on the investments, great job. Stephen Rushforth, we heard what you've been doing in Safety Risk, and Steve Dillinger on the insurance and leading that committee, and all the savings that we've been able to generate over there. So just wanted to reiterate those very positive things that are happening here in our, in our county.
It's an exciting time.
Yeah. So with that, I'll move to County Attorney.
Yes, I have, and I have a few things for the Commissioners today. The first is a contract for the Northern Hilton County Academy. This is on your standard not-for-profit grant agreement. The only difference is that this is paid out of the court's budget, not the Commissioners'. This was, has been worked on by Commissioner Harebrand, Councilman Nation and Hall, and this is between Sheridan Schools and Hamilton High Schools.
And Westfield.
Also might be, yes, they might be involved, and it's for a, for $100,000 for this year, then there'll be another $100,000 for next year's budget. Again, in the court's budget, not the Commissioners'. So I have that for your approval today. So move.
Second.
Discussion. I just wanted to commend the Superintendent's Monday and Dr. Arrowwood and Paul Kaiser, the efforts. This is really a neat thing, what's going on there, and the success that they're going to have with those kids. So anyway, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Anything else?
Yes, that I have for the 911 Dispatch Center BOT, we have an amendment to the scoping agreement for a dollar amount of $284,860. The scoping period took slightly longer than expected, and did not include items such as FFNE, Design Coordination Relocation Fees of FFNE, and other expenses. Steve Wood has reviewed this, has approved it, and it is in 911's current budget they have for that. So I have that today for your approval as well.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is the PRO Audit Agreement. This is the audit agreement that is sent to us on, by PRO on behalf of the State Department of Accounts. They are performing this year's annual audit. The one question that Commissioner Harebrand had was that there did not mention fees and auditor bills. Clarified that. PRO's hourly rate is tremendously subsidized, since the State Department of Accounts does pay for a portion of this. And we will not know their final audit fee until the audit has been completed, and then at the end of it, they take that out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
Robin Siders?
That settlement, and then it's deducted from, from the Form 20.
Yeah, I just thought it was odd when I'm reading that, that I saw nothing there with fees or cost.
And we have an entrance interview scheduled, and I, I'm sorry, Robin, I don't know the date, and I, in the near future, with the President of Commissioners, President of Council, and the Auditor and her team, and I will be there as well. And that's in the next, very near, near future. Yes.
Yeah, lucky me.
So I have that for your review, and I
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Grant. As you all are aware, the county closed the program on November 11th of 2023. Since then, it has been identified that Westfield Washington Township Trustee had contracts with service providers that went until December 31st of 2023. And we have not paid those claims since it was not associated to closing costs, closing the program at that time. Westfield Washington Township Trustee has requested that the Commissioners approve the, these claims, and so has Shepherd Center, and I can't remember who else is the other one. But I think Jennifer Chavez and Lauren Powell and Todd Clevenger are here, if you have any additional questions on that. But the ask today is to pay for services for the ERIP program through December 31st of 2023. At this, after this, would be only costs related to closing going forward.
So it's just this segment that runs the contract through the end of the year, and services were provided as contracted for, correct?
Yes.
And I'd move that we honor those contracts and pay the claims.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is an agreement between Citian, Brad, does that sound right to you? Citian's the crash data report contract. It's for $89,000. It is a program that provides crash data to Hamilton County. The other municipalities will eventually, I believe, pay for their portion of it to some extent, or form or fashion. The Highway asked me to draft the agreement. The agreement they have is, has terms that are typically appropriate for us. Brad, is there any other questions or comments or anything else related to the Commissioners today?
No, it's pretty comprehensive in reporting crash data, and that could be very useful for us as well.
Is there any duplication at all with MPO that they provide us at all?
I think that's a lot more accurate information than I get from the MPO.
Okay. How is this going to be paid? What budgets are coming out of?
And that's one thing we discussed two breaks. The Commissioner's professional service budget is not as
Robust.
As it typically is. And so you mentioned
It was intended to take forward our highway budget.
That's right. So I would move to approve as the expenditures coming from highway.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The, I apologize, I just have a couple more. The next item I have is the, was it CFP FTA grants. Todd Clevenger and Yolanda and Roscoe from Janus are here to discuss that. It involves federal matching, and it needs the decision from the Commissioners sooner rather than later to take advantage of this opportunity. I don't know if one of you three want to kind of brief the Commissioners on this.
Someone needs to present.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. What we have before you is a request to proceed with proposal application for FTA Federal 5339 Grant Funds. These are capital dollars for replacement of vehicles and equipment. And these are funds that are administered by Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation on behalf of the metropolitan planning area. Our fleet is in dire, dire straits in terms of high mileage and conditions. Our fleet of 26 vehicles have over 133,000 miles average. So we're requesting that the county apply for these funds, and we're requesting that you apply for six replacement vehicles, which will be modified, accessible minivans, and also associated high-definition interior camera equipment that would go with those. The total for the whole project is $453,000 with federal funds. FTA, it is 80% matched by the federal government. So they will pay, they will provide 362,400, and where the county would then be responsible for the local match of 20%, which is $90,600.
Do we have that budgeted? I mean, where's the local match coming from?
Typically, it comes from the, the advertising funds that come, these are the county's assets.
Right. No, I understood, but it
This is
Can you come up to this?
This, this is a new call for projects based off of, I believe they had some hard money left over. Indigo did. And so we didn't know it was coming, so it would have to come from probably the general fund.
But we haven't approached Council with this request yet?
Because we just, we, we can't move forward unless
Okay, yeah.
Unless the proposal is approved. So there's, and it's got to be by February 9th.
Okay. And I will tell you that we have been meeting, we have a group of people that meet on the Transportation Committee. Counselor Nation's a strong proponent of this, and as well as Cecilia Kobel from Fishers, and Todd sits on that committee as well. And we've made significant strides regarding our transportation efforts. And one of the things that's been clearly identified on here was the age of the fleet, and really the cost of what a bus costs now is more than doubled. And so it's something that I feel like is really important, that I think we take to the next step and search that and have some discussions with the Council.
Now, my only concern, I don't disagree with the age of the fleet. I like the conversion from full van to the smaller vehicle. All that makes sense. I know you researched it, Roscoe. I'm just worried about local share in signing off on the contract unless we feel comfortable that we can find 80 grand someplace on the local share. And I'm sure that we can come up with it even if Council doesn't appropriate it, maybe with already appropriated funds. So I just want to be in the record.
Approve subject to the security funding?
Funding, just funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you both for all your help.
That school is wonderful.
Todd, thanks for all your help on this as well.
The next item I have is the, is a Hamilton County Production Well Proposal from Westler Engineering. As you are all aware, we recently added Potawatli Park and Lafayette Trace Park, Lafayette Trace Trail Park to the Hamilton County Regional Utility District in an attempt to try to secure and protect Hamilton County's water resources in Cleveland here. This will be the next step for Westler Engineering to start drilling, sorry, digging test wells and see how much the aquifer actually produces. And this is outside of the scope of the services that we've already hired Westler for. I have Marty Westler here for any questions, comments, or concerns about this.
And what's the cost of the contract?
It is, it's 100 and, one second, I apologize, $167,000. It do not exceed a 167,000.
And we have that available?
In the, the project's budget, yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Marty, for all your help on that.
The next item I have is ordinance 012224A. This is per Mike DeBido for the vocational rehabilitation program that the FSSA has available. And best Hamilton County is not a non-government entity, and only government entities can apply for this. So this is just the first step forth. The actual funding agreement will happen sometime in March, but this is just causing, has caused for the Director of Administration, the Auditor, to work to create a fund that we can receive these funds when the time does eventually come. And we can work on the details for it, but this is the first step that Mike DeBido is requesting be done, so that we can be considered for these funds, from my understanding for it. And I know Commissioner Alden's been very intimately involved in this project, too. And so if there's anything else, Commissioner, that's the extent of mine. But I would request the waiving of the rules and adopting on first reading if appropriate.
I'd move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I would move to approve said ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have two more things in there, real quick. I apologize. At your last meeting, you guys approved a change order for the HHW BOT that was to add the trailers, put that under the BOT scope. At that, so you guys approved the dollar amount, but there was a change for the date for the completion of that. And it's, sorry, I'm not seeing it here. From the, the closing date from January 30th to March 29th, Steve Wood has reviewed this. I believe someone for Envoy is here also. If there's any questions, comments, or concerns.
Yes, I think that may have gotten pulled. There's something got pulled off.
Well, I think it did on his agenda.
Okay.
So, so what this is, well, our Gmax price, it just, everything's in review and tack with Noblesville. Until, until that's done, I can't get Gmax price. That's all that's doing. We said we'd have it by January 30th, but Noblesville's taking a little bit of time going through the tack meeting with the road project. So that's the reason we did that. And that's all this, was no financial
There's no doubt.
Just to make a change, because we want to make sure we have everything in the project as requested.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then the last item I have is a quick update on the Judicial Center project. As you know, at the last meeting, the Commissioners disbanded the BOT Review Committee and created a new scoping committee. And Envoy has met with Steve Wood to set some parameters. They are going to be working towards defining what the scoping period will be. Everyone get their fees, and they will work with Steve Wood. We are going to set up an initial project kickoff meeting with Steve Wood and Envoy and Garmon and Structure Point to start this process going down the road. Is that a fair
Correct.
Description of that? So there's no motion or anything? It's just more of an informational purposes to keep you guys in the loop on that? Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Can still get a scoping, scoping dollar amount?
I thought, I'm just refresh my recollection, because I'm slow. But I thought that we picked Envoy to look at land acquisition. What official actions have we taken on that BOT process?
So the, the way, when you originally chose a BOT developer
See, I didn't think we did.
You chose them to begin the scoping period, and there are reasons why we did not
Well, I just want to go through that. So order of, because my last recollection was we looked at land acquisition and negotiation.
Correct.
And I've probably slept since then.
So was to choose Envoy for the project, with certain people as part of the team, to get a scoping price, to do a master plan
Okay.
For both sides of the building, and to give us an answer of which side is more economic.
Okay, so this is just on?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's fine. I misunderstood the, the presentation. Thank you.
I apologize, yeah. So just an information, just no action needed.
No action.
And that, that is all. I apologize for taking
Quite a bit.
Yeah. Busy two weeks, I guess.
Director of Administration.
Actually, I agree.
Mr. Buckingham.
Thank you. I unfortunately have a little stolzka. So first off, I'm, have a matter presenting for your review and approval, and the signature of Commissioner Harebrand of a Water Infrastructure Grant Program Disbursement Form related to the January 9th, 2024 invoice from Westler Engineering. The invoice covers the period through January, actually, I think it's the date of January 9th, covers through December. Invoice number 4329A is in the amount of $97,7684. And 43249B, which is the invoice that the dispersment form is related to, is in the amount of $4,510.50 from Westler Engineering. To total combined, equal $102,277.34. All of that is related to design, land acquisition, construction, administration, and construction management services related to Phase 1A and, 1A, 1B, and Phase 2A and 2B of the US 31 Baker's Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District project. As I've indicated, the dispersment form relates only to invoice B, as invoice A is covered by ARPA funds, which do not require the document.
Is there a motion?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. There's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, I'm presenting on behalf of Chris Mertens, ISS Director for your review, discussion, and approval and signature, a statement of work for Workday Lean On Services Support for work to be provided by Collaborative Solutions LLC. I believe this is all related to the Workday. Chris is here, if you have any additional questions.
So this is a post-go-live support. So this is, we're starting to wind down our implementation project and, and the post-go-live that was a part of that implementation. This is essentially ongoing support post the go-live implementation period. We were able to stop paying for the support we'd been paying for Eden and the amounts are very comparable in terms of the support, annual support for our Eden product and ongoing support for the, the Workday product.
Have we identified any, any specialty programming we need once we've implemented on items we just missed in scoping or things that didn't work as we anticipated with Workday and the new program?
There are some, there's a, a post-go-live log of, of things that, you know, we, we didn't want to change during the implementation process that will be addressed in post-go-live. We've also set up an internal site for, for those communications to come to a central point, and so those can be vetted in terms of whether or not we want to move forward with those. But this type of support in this agreement would, would lend themselves to that. If there was a, a new business process that we needed to implement that we didn't have the expertise to do, we would bring in the support from this agreement.
Okay. Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, presenting for your review and formal approval, request from Shirley Hunter Smith of the Daughters of the American Revolution, who's seeking formal approval for the placement of the, of a plaque honoring the Revolutionary War veterans who are buried in Hamilton County. Several months ago, you previously had approved the concept, but wanted to see the color proof before giving final approval. Ms. Smith's recently provided that color proof and would like, now like your final approval to move forward with the purchase and placement of the plaque on the war memorial.
And Steve Wood has been involved in this too, to not only make sure that it works there on the, the monument, but go through all the fine details that's needed on it.
Do we have a rendering? Because she was going to provide.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's going to look like in, before they actually craft the plaque, they're going to blow it up and have it.
Correct.
So they can line up all the names with the names on the plaque above it.
We would like to make a suggestion that we're working on a rendering too that would leave enough space for when we know people are going to come and want to put more names on there.
We have three blanks, I think, on there.
Yeah, so the one we're working on will have ten blanks. And we did, we're almost done with that. I'm just, it's the same thing as what's that, that she's got, except we're requesting more blanks. We've already fitted, fit the size where it goes on the monument. We're just, we want to get this done and then get that back for her, for her approval and then give it to you.
Does the font match existing font?
Correct. Exactly. That's what, a way we're doing, we're using the same firm that did the current one. Everything's going to match.
Okay.
That's, and that's what it is. We just want to make sure that, because they've added so many more names to it already since it started, we want to make sure there's enough space under to add more names so we don't have that issue.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Moved to table.
Second.
There's been a motion to table, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, presenting for your review and approval, request from Ferris Khan of the Hamilton County Highway Department, who's seeking authorization to utilize the Commissioner courtroom on the evening of Tuesday, February twentieth of twenty-twenty-four for a public information meeting for a small structure project that the Highway Department is working on. The Judicial Center is already scheduled to be open that evening because there's high school mock trial competition, which is going to be occurring that night, so.
In the same facility?
In, in this building.
Okay. It's moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And mock trials are going to be here, I assume, though?
They'll be up at the courtroom. Next item, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, request from Althea McGill, Executive Director of Noblesville Creates, who's seeking permission to utilize the historic courthouse square for four different events during twenty-twenty-four. Those are on April seventh of twenty-twenty-four for the Noblesville Arts Community Eclipse Celebration, April nineteenth and twentieth of twenty-twenty-four for Noblesville Creates Ferryville, June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-four.
Steve's favorite.
Yeah. For the Hatch Fest, which will be done in conjunction with the Saint Michael Strawberry Fest, and lastly, August third of twenty-twenty-four for the Art Fair on the Square, which will be done in conjunction with the Hamilton County Artists Association. She's provided the event applications.
With insurance?
If.
They normally do.
They, they.
Well, no, because they think they're starting to separate from tourism. That's why I want to make sure they got.
We always, we always tell them that all of your approvals are contingent on them providing the necessary insurance documents.
So moved, subject to insurance.
Second. Have you coordinated that against anything the Main Street is wanting to do?
Stay tuned.
Okay.
But that just, this doesn't coordinate, doesn't conflict.
I don't believe there are any conflicts.
Okay, there's been a motion. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sure you're really, I'm sure you're really excited about that stuff.
I'm just thrilled to death.
Yes.
I don't know whether there's any truth to the rumor that he will again be named Kenny, Kenny, the Ferryville.
He is real cute today, aren't you?
Okay. Presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Kate Baker, Executive Director of Noblesville Main Street, who's seeking permission to utilize the historic courthouse square for four events under this, this item, for, for events or event weekends during twenty-twenty-four. Those are May thirty-first and June first of twenty-twenty-four for the Noblesville Race Weekend, which includes the annual Boys and Girls Club Bed Race, the Lions Club Annual Pork Chop Event, and the annual Duck Race. Then on July twentieth for the Noblesville Street Dance, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-four for the Upstairs Downtown Event, and lastly, November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four for the Small Business Saturday Event. And again, it would be subject to them providing the insurance.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Your next item, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, another request from Kate Baker, Executive Director of Noblesville Main Street, seeking permission to utilize the historic courthouse square for Six Music and All That Jazz Events. Those would take place on May eleventh of twenty-four, June eighth of twenty-twenty-four, July thirteenth of twenty-twenty-four, August eighth, excuse me, August tenth of twenty-twenty-four, September fourteenth of twenty-twenty-four, and October twelfth of twenty-twenty-four. Again, that's for music and all that jazz.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
No one can complain. There's nothing to do in downtown Noblesville.
Well, it gets better.
Wait, wait, there's more?
Yeah. Presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Kate Baker, Executive Director of Noblesville Main Street, seeking permission to utilize the historic courthouse square for eleven First Friday events. Those are scheduled for February second of twenty-twenty-four, March first of twenty-twenty-four, April fifth, May third, June seventh, July fifth, August second, September sixth, October first, and November sixth, all of twenty-twenty-four. And again.
For what?
For First Friday events.
What is First Friday?
They've been doing it for a while. They basically are opportunities for businesses to stay open on Friday evenings and people can go walk around the square, go into different businesses and sometimes I, I, they may have, you know, refreshments available for people or other things.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm just presenting as a reminder for you, the Hamilton County Soil and Water Annual Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February eighth of twenty-twenty-four at two-zero-zero-three Pleasant Street, Hall B. That's before your next meeting, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, remind you of that. Next item, presenting for your review and approval, we have to reschedule a couple of the upcoming Board of Commissioner meetings due to some scheduling conflicts and an upcoming solar phenomenon. First, the Board of Commissioner meeting scheduled for February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four at one P.M. needs to be moved up to the prior Friday, February twenty-third of twenty-twenty-four. So on that day, the exec session would begin at twelve fifteen and the public VOC meeting would begin at one P.M. on the Friday, the twenty-third, rather than Monday, the twenty-sixth. First, we'll deal with that one first.
Okay.
I thought we changed it, but I'll move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Additionally, second change would be with regard to April eighth, twenty-twenty-four, Board of Commissioner meeting needs to be moved from one forty-five P.M. to ten thirty A.M. with the executive session being moved from, moved up to ten A.M. rather than the usual one P.M. These changes are obviously necessary due to the closure of county offices at noon on that day due to the solar eclipse occurring later that afternoon.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have relates, and I'm presenting it for your review and signature, the previously approved mental health consultant contracts for David Berman of Mindwell Solutions and Brendan George of Hope Recovery Strategies. These contracts were previously approved by you in principle. I have for you today one combined contract for the two of them that will deal with both entities or cover both entities and need your signature on that contract.
And nothing's changed on the contract. It's just exactly the same.
I believe it is.
It is. I confirmed it with Connor and Connor's reviewed it too.
And we're going to have the review next meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a motion? It looks like it just has one signature on it, so.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is a request by the Noblesville P.D. to use the fairgrounds for public safety operations for the day of the solar eclipse on April eighth. They'd like to use a portion of the property there, have access to the restrooms and ability to recharge drones if necessary. They have about four to five people approximately manned at that location to be able to have a good central location for conducting public safety operations on the day of the solar eclipse.
New approval.
Second, we've checked with our solar folks and it's not interfere with plans.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next thing I have is I'm requesting approval to move forward with the process of appointing Jamie Bowler-Smith to the Capital Improvement Board of Managers of Marion County. Ms. Smith has been representing this county and five others recently and is due up for reappointment. The process, being the largest of the six donor counties that are involved, you're responsible for the formal appointment, but I need to get authorization from the other five counties before that can take place, and I'm just asking you to be in that process.
You have the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, the largest county within the group of counties to appoint. I nominate that individual from Jamie.
Jamie Bowler-Smith.
From Hendricks.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I'll work with obtaining authorization from the other donor counties that are involved. And last, but not least, as you're aware, the county has just wrapped up our year-long bicentennial celebration. And at this point in time, I have a couple members of the bicentennial committee here to present a wrap-up presentation. I have Jessica Lehman and Kathy Williams, they are here to present. Brenda Myers, who's also a member of that board, was unfortunately unable to make it today as she had a concussion.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Thanks so much for letting me come before you today. This is pretty much my last official act as bicentennial coordinator, so I'm excited to be here and thanks Kathy for helping pass out a report that you are welcome to review at your leisure. I am just going to go over it really quickly, focus on really good numbers to show off what we did during twenty-twenty-three. As you know, we have a book that we published, we have sold right about seven hundred out of a thousand print run of our book, and our publisher continues to handle those transactions. So we're really pleased with that. And if you don't have a book yet, once the thousand are gone, it's gone, so be sure to get it. Budget, we distributed almost sixty thousand dollars in grants to twenty-nine organizations and representatives from all nine townships. That was resulted in almost fifty programs throughout twenty-twenty-three. We paid the bicentennial coordinator, that's me, three communications, contract workers, a photographer and videographer, and three content developers. Our merchandise provider, Market Pro, allowed us to only pay for our merchandise that did not sell by the end of twenty-twenty-three, which really helped us defer our costs. We were able to cover the cost of purchasing that leftover within our budget. The only things on the town floor as of yet are small reimbursements related to merchandise. Since writing this report, our last book loyalty payment did come through, so the budget's pretty much taken care of. Communications, we had a website, you know, all this information. The communications team helped design our merchandise, made our print calendar that hopefully you saw all over the county during the year. We did special video promotions on social media, helped design the book, did all kinds of things. Our traveling exhibit was funded by the Hamilton County Community Foundation, which covered all five themes of the bicentennial and traveled over thirty-five weeks of the year to right about thirty locations, and that included everything from elementary schools to libraries to businesses all around the county. And that will be able to continue to be used by the Hamilton County Historical Society. The team, bicentennial event management team planned both the opening event at the Palladium and Carmel, as well as the closing event, the bicentennial bash in December. The opening had about six hundred people attending and the closing had around three hundred and sixty people attending, and both showcased the history of the entire county and all the great resources we have related to history. Related to events, our grant-funded programs, the fifty that I mentioned, had a total of approximate, approximately fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty attendees. It's a very approximate number and does not include interactions at farmer's markets. We went to over twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, at least thirty different farmer market dates, and then also does not include people who went to see the traveling exhibit. So a lot of people had a lot of impact from the bicentennial. The high school ambassador program, you three are very familiar with, funded by the county commissioners individually, which we thank you for again. We had eleven students from almost every high school in the county, they attended programs led by community leaders as well as bicentennial events, and they engaged in approximately sixty hours of activities over the bicentennial year. Our transportation marker program is in development as a legacy project. The bicentennial kind of planted the seed with David Highway County Historian and the Hamilton County Historical Society, hopes to take this project to fruition in future years. Lost transportation routes like canals, stagecoach stops, interurban stops, memorialized with some sort of permanent signage. So keep an eye out for that as a future possible legacy project. I think at least the three commissioners have seen the video that we created through our bicentennial project we contracted with Daniel Gross Photography and Adam Graham Media to create a permanent record of the bicentennial. If you haven't seen the photos or video, be sure to check out our social media and be sure to.
Yeah, can you send a, a link to us?
I can.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. And beyond that, I just wanted to mention that, thank you, of course, and also in my other role as Hamilton County Historical Society, we, I hope we continue to work together and you'll see me again, I'm sure.
Thank you for all you.
Yeah, thank you.
And on the leftover merchandise, it probably ought to come back here to, so we determine how to distribute.
I had an, I told her maybe we should bring it back here, have a table out a couple days and see, saw it maybe at a even reduced rate. Yeah, and tried to do that so we can.
Well, it might be like ambassador gifts and things like that.
Yes, we could move that through, but yeah. But I just wanted to add, Jessica did a wonderful job for us this last year, two years. I keep, you say a year, but we actually worked on it for.
Maybe like three.
Three years, okay. Keeps getting longer. But anyway, she did a great job in leading it and we do appreciate all you guys' support because we couldn't have done it without it and it, it meant a lot. I, I think the thing I enjoyed the most about it was it included all nine townships.
Right.
Each one had a program and had a part of it. And I think that's what made it really cool, so we really appreciate that.
And I think they all embraced it. I mean, it wasn't, I mean, and they got to highlight what they felt was important for their communities and I thought it came up beautifully.
Appreciate that. Anything else? We're good.
Thank you very much.
Can I give you FYI on a different subject?
Yeah.
You kept talking about the solar thing. I just wanted to, this is totally FYI, we've taken care of it, but April 8th is the last day to register to vote. And so normally we would be open till 4:30. And so because of that, there's a provision in the state law, it carries over to the next day. So voter registration deadline will actually now be the 9th. And then absentee voting will also start both on the 9th, so it just moved over.
That happened just last year, or last, or a while back.
Yeah, you probably, maybe no one would ask you, but if someone does, we've taken care of it. And Tammy Sanders is going to help us with the media to get the word out, so.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Auditor. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a few things for you. This first piece is the alcoholic beverage board appointment, and we only need signatures, no motions, so I'll start that down. Next, I have the approval for the 2024 elected official certi bonds for your approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have the 2023 gross wages for your approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I have a capital asset disposal notification form for your approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have the Treasurers December 23 Monthly Report for your approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I have acceptance of bonds and letters of credit for your approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, any releases of bonds and letters of credit for your approval.
So moved.
Second.